Hi, I'm Dr. Renee Turchi, Plymouth White Marsh High School distinguished graduate and pediatrician at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, and you're watching CITV.
Before we have the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask that everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember those who lost their lives yesterday at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. We mourn the tragic loss of the lives of students, teachers, and staff, and our deepest sympathies go out to the victims, their families, and friends. We continue to be vigilant protecting our students, teachers, and staff, ensuring that all of our students have access to counselors and mental health resources if they need assistance in processing this tragedy. To the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. We have, we were going to have students here for Plymouth White Marsh High School 2018 Montgomery County Overdose Awareness Billboard Contest finalists, but they were unable to attend. So, Dr. Christian, you want to...
Sure, we had three students recognized and they apologized they can't attend tonight, but high school senior Sarah Fortelli, Julie Fidler, and Autumn Lowry have been selected to be among the 10 finalists for the 2018 Montgomery County Overdose Awareness Billboard Contest sponsored by the Montgomery County Commissioners. Members of the community may vote for the winner online via the county's website. There's also a story and a link on our website. Voting runs through February 21st. Last year's Plymouth White Marsh winner Matty Fair won the contest, so we're hoping for two years in a row. Congratulations to our students.
That is wonderful, thank you. Mrs. Peduzzi and Mr. Ramondo cannot be attending tonight, so I'll be leading this meeting. I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting. We discussed tonight's personnel actions, including a separation and release agreement. We also reviewed real estate assessment appeals and a confidential student matter. Meeting lasted approximately one hour. Now, let's go to approval of the minutes. We'd like to approve the minutes for an FMT committee meeting that was held on January 10th, a curriculum committee meeting that was held on January 16th, a community relations student life committee that was held on January 16th, and a general session was held on January 18th. That's enclosures 1 through 4. That's a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
You have a second? Thank you. Any agreement? May I? Thank you. Oh, it's for a formal vote?
All in favor.
All in favor? Aye. Alright, thanks.
All opposed.
Any opposed? No, then that motion carries. Pass that. Thank you. For our financial reports, budget transfer, a general funds federal programs bill, a capital reserve fund, a food service bill, cafeteria report, an outstanding investment report, cash flow summary, comparison of taxes collected, real estate escrow report, a trust fund reconciliation of cash counts, budgetary deficit status report, and a bond fund report. Those are enclosures 5 through 15, and that's a motion to approve those reports. You have a second? Thank you, Adam. And, all in favor?
Questions or comments?
Oh, thank you. Any questions or comments about those? We usually have none, so that's all. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Those motions carry. Thank you. Treasurers report. Do we have a treasurer's report at this point? Just the board of that, we don't, okay. And that's in enclosure 16 if people are interested in seeing that. That's from January 2018. It's a motion to approve that treasurer's report. We have a second? Thank you, Jen. Alright, any comment about that treasurer's report? Nope? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That's been approved. Are there any public comments on the agenda for this evening? Yes. Please identify yourself and where you live.
I don't know if I have enough breath. I didn't realize this parking lot was going to be so filled, so I had parked down in my neighborhood, run up the thing. I'm really old. My name is Linda Dahl. I live on Fairway Road, which is in with walking distance, and today, running distance of this school building. I have lived in this Colonial School District for 30 years, and I have volunteered tutored in this school district for 20 years, which includes five years beyond the graduation of both my sons, who went through the entire kindergarten through 12th grade in this district. I continue to volunteer in this district because I have found this district to be exceptional, and I feel that I am contributing my little part in the way I can. I would like to make public comment on the new business agenda item D, which is a motion to approve Godshell Kane O'Rourke Architects to do preliminary work on the Colonial Middle School site, which includes such items as the HVAC, piping, and auditorium seating. This cost is not to exceed $50,000. I believe this firm should be hired to do the work, and the motion should be approved. These architects have done previous work on our Colonial School District buildings. The buildings include our high school, Ridge Park Elementary, and Plymouth Elementary, in addition to other little spot jobs. The architectural firm, Godshell Kane O'Rourke, know our building layouts, our wants, and our needs. They have been financially diligent in providing quality work at a reasonable price. How do I know this? Not only do the financial figures attest to my statement, but I also know this because of Terry M., our Colonial School District Facilities Director, the person who finds all the firms to do our building's work, whether it is building a new building, adding on to existing buildings, or just fixing what needs to be fixed in all of our buildings. He is the type of person who spends Colonial District's money like it was his own money. He goes out and looks at all the firms, and after careful consideration, picks the one he would personally use himself. If anyone thinks differently, I would like to see the facts and figures that prove that this district's facilities additions and improvements under the management of Terry M. haven't shown that we have gotten the biggest bang for our buck. If anyone has followed my family's personal history and problems with Colonial School District and victory fields, you have heard that I have faulted the design of victory fields for two of my devastating floods in our home. One was in 2004, and one was in 2009. I have come up against Colonial School District and Terry M. many times, yet I stand up here today to tell you that I have trust in Terry M. and our district. And when he decides that Godshell Kane and O'Rourke are architects as the correct people, I believe that. They should be the architects for addition to Colonial Middle School. If anyone has the right to make a statement about the facilities decision at Colonial School District, I feel it's me. From my own personal tragedies to attending facility committee meetings for over 10 years, I know what is happening, unlike many others who are new to the process. If you keep overriding the decisions of the district's paid staff in favor of an agenda that some school board members appear to have, we are going to lose a lot of good administrators, and I find that a tragic misuse of power. Thank you.
Any other comments on that? Thank you. Any other comments on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue the meeting. Staff report.
Thank you. Tonight Colonial School District's going to share some of the ways our schools are teaching students to respect each other's differences and value diversity. Our students participate in projects and assemblies that encourage them to embrace the many cultures that make up the Colonial community. These activities can be found throughout, embedded throughout our curriculum. This evening, we have our middle school administrative team, Mr. Fowler, and his staff, as well as Donna Dryson from White Marsh Elementary, and they're going to do a brief presentation for us.
Thank you, Dr. Christian, and to all the cabinet members and the school board members. Thank you so much for inviting us here this evening. I have been an administrator at White Marsh Elementary School for many years, and I am very, very proud of all the things that are being done for respecting differences and tolerant of many different cultures and our diverse community. And tonight, I do have some helpers with me, some teachers from White Marsh, but before I introduce them, I would like to talk a little bit about a concert that White Marsh Elementary School had just a couple weeks ago in first grade. You would never know at that concert, all the different children that were there. We had autistic children there, we have physically disabled children there, we had learning support children there, regular education children there, and when those children were on the stage, they were all one. And I am so proud of the fact of the wonderful things that happened in special education and regular education in Colonial School District. I want to thank Mrs. Burke, I don't see her here today, but for all the support and the supervisors that help in special education. I want to thank Dr. Rodriguez for the terrific staff that we hire so that we can have these excellent programs. And I want to tell you that at this concert, my regular education first grade teacher attended every practice, and our specialists attended every practice, so that all the children would be successful, and that was during their prep period. So, I want to thank you as teachers, all the regular education teachers, all you do to make all our children feel equal and part of our community, which they really do. So, thank you so much for all you do every day. And now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Susan Hope and April Litwin. Susan's a kindergarten teacher at White Marsh, and April Litwin's a second grade teacher to share all the great programs that we do at White Marsh, but I want to share with you that the programs that we're doing at White Marsh, many programs are being done through all the elementary schools. They might be different, but there are many wonderful things that are being done. So, thank you, April and Susan.
Every day in the Colonial School District, students, teachers, and staff look for ways to help others and give back to our community and to the world.
We at, excuse me, we at White Marsh take pride in making a difference in our community.
Thank you. Was there something that they need to do?
No, it's cool.
There we go. Thank you.
Our Super Bowl can collection took on an extra added level of excitement this year with our Eagles being in the big game. During the week before the Super Bowl, the children were able to bring canned goods in. They could be cans of soup or any canned goods, and they would use their can to vote for which team they thought was going to win the Super Bowl. As you can tell from the photographs, there were way more votes for the Eagles. The Patriots can is not in the photographs. It did have five cans voted for. But, way more of the kids thought the Eagles were going to win, and all of the food that was collected is going to be donated to the Colonial Neighborhood Council.
In second grade, students study citizenship, and as a service learning project, they use their recycled candy from Halloween to create candy bark. All the children package the bark, as you can see in the picture, they're very excited to make the candy, package it, and then we send it to local police officers where we also thank them for their service.
During the month of December, each of our classrooms collect money to buy gifts for local children. Each classroom has a collection jar, and the children bring in money from their piggy bank, they bring in maybe their ice cream money, they donate it to the collection jar instead of ice cream, getting ice cream for a day. And then, we take that money, and as you can see in the photographs, the kids help to sort the coins and the bills, they help to count it, and they brainstorm a list of ideas of gifts that they think that child would like to get. The teachers then go shop, and we bring the gifts in, and we show the children what their donations were able to purchase for a local child, and the children get really excited about that they are part of making someone else, another child in our community, happy at the holiday time.
In the month of November, the Colonial Neighborhood Council, the PTO, and students donate a Thanksgiving meal for a family in our community. As you can see, there's a bunch of big boxes there. Inside the boxes, each child brings in one item from the class, and each bucket contains one item that a child has brought in, and the materials inside provide a family with an entire Thanksgiving meal, and this really is such a special part of the holidays, and it's a great collaboration among so many people.
Veterans Day at White Marsh is one of our most special days of the school year. Each year, we invite in veterans who are family or friends of our students and staff to come join us for a full morning of activities. The morning begins with an all-school assembly where the child, each student introduces their vet that they brought to school. We also sing patriotic songs, and then the veterans are scheduled for visits in classrooms where they get to share their personal experiences with the students. The morning ends with a luncheon in the cafeteria where the veterans get to eat their lunch with the students and the staff, which is one of the most enjoyable parts of the morning. This year, we were honored to be able to have 51 veterans come to help bring history to life in our school.
At White Marsh Elementary, we're always celebrating our diverse community, and one of our favorite ways is during the month of February, we have a very special guest come to school. This is Queen Noor. In celebration of Black History Month, Queen Noor presents an energetic performance. She shares traditional African-American folktales and songs that teach the children about African-American leaders, and the kids absolutely love her. We love her too. Everybody gets involved for this assembly.
During the month of January, in kindergarten, we celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. His dream was that all people everywhere would learn to live together in peace. So, to honor his work, the kindergarten children work towards earning peace medals for being kind, and helpful, and thoughtful, and solving problems in a peaceful way.
This is our Little Chef's Eatery. The life skills class plans, they prepare, and they serve a meal to the teaching staff and family and friends at White Marsh Elementary. The children use the proceeds to host four events throughout the year, and it's a very special luncheonette. If you have time, you should stop by and come visit us for this event. This is super.
During the Olympics, we hear many stories of athletes who overcame great obstacles to reach their ultimate goal of participating in the Olympics and Paralympics. We invited our students to share in this excitement by choosing a goal for themselves that they would try to reach each day of the Olympics. So, the children would set a goal for themselves, and they have a recording sheet where they would keep track every day if they were able to reach their goal. The goal could be something like setting the table each night for dinner. It could be a physical goal, like doing 10 sit-ups every day, or it could be an academic goal, like reading 15 minutes a night. The children are really excited about this, and as a reward for them participating in this activity, they will receive a medal at the end of the Olympics.
I want to thank you again for listening to all the great things that are going on at White Marsh Elementary School. When you drive up to White Marsh, it says, "Welcome to someplace special," and we truly feel that way about our school, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I too would like to thank everyone for inviting us here tonight. I'd like to preface our presentation just to say that, you know, promoting the idea of accepting differences in people, certainly a team effort between families where it starts and schools, and any successes we have in those areas certainly, you know, need to be spread among all of you as well as all of our schools. These are just some examples that happen to be at our school, but we know it's something that we believe in, in the entire school district and this community. On this first slide, I just want to set the tone of the spirit of, you know, our initiative at the middle school. We've been a no-place-for-hate school for 10 years, but the message to the students has never been, "Hey, look at our banners. We don't have any hate in our school," because we all know that that's not true. You know, we still have bullying, and students that aren't always nice to each other. So, it's more saying, "Okay, we have earned this kind of award, however, does everyone sitting here in the auditorium really feel like we're a no-place-for-hate school?" And the answer is no. There are some students here that eat by themselves, there are some students that still go through school, and it's not a great place. Our challenge is, how do we change that? How do we actually become a no-place-for-hate school? And that's our goal. It may not be one that we can absolutely achieve, but it's one that we want to continue to aspire to achieve. Another message that I wanted to get across was, every year, we start with grade-level assemblies, and my favorite one every single year is talking to the eighth graders, because that assembly's different than the other two. We say to them, "Guys, this is your school. You're the leaders in this school. You're going to set the tone. Your behavior in the back of the bus is going to be embraced by your sixth and seventh grade classmates. The way you treat each other, how seriously you take school, all those kinds of things are behaviors that those younger students are watching, and whatever you do is the cool thing to do." So, we challenge them every year to really be the ones that lead our school, and I think that's really a great message that they need to hear, because the way this stuff really works in reality is when our kids embrace it, and our kids model it for each other, and actually put it into practice. I'm going to turn the rest over to Mr. Chang, who's done an amazing job at our school continuing to promote this message.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. So, as Mr. Fowler said, you know, we really want kids to buy into our initiative. So, this year, we started our year with a climate survey to all of our kids, to get some feedback from them on how they felt about our school. And, you know, the good news is 90% of the feedback was really positive about how great our school was, but 10% of it was some things that caused reflection for us and things that we wanted to think about and do better here. And a message that we kind of kept hearing was, "Hey, kids are different when teachers are here versus when it's just kids." And, we want to keep sharing that message about our character is who we are when no one's watching. And, we had an assembly earlier this year, and the theme of it here was, "We all need reminders." Every one of us, whether, I talked about my three-year-old son, I got to give him reminders every 10 seconds on how to behave, you know? And then, when you're Mr. Fowler's age, you probably don't need as many reminders to really, you know, make sure you're acting appropriately. So, we have all these reminders built in, and I just wanted to share some of them with you here. So, this picture right here is a guy that Mr. Fowler brought in for an assembly. His name's Torrey Gant, and he had a lot of great messages, but right here is a quote that I put up there that I thought was really important for our kids to hear, kind of echoed that theme, and says, "What kind of picture will life produce when no one's watching? Will it show you helping or hurting someone?" So, that's something just as a reminder for all of our kids. When you walk in the front light court at Colonial Middle School, we have this art project. A lot of people walk right by it. It's a reminder for our kids. It looks like a bunch of red tags, but when you get closer and you read those, these kids answer these three questions. What do you hope for? What do you value? And justice for whom? And I just picked a couple samples of student work and what they thought, and I think it really shows the type of empathy that they have, how they think about other people, and a great sense of maturity for middle school kids. Our No Place For Hate group, a way to remind kids, to teach kids about other cultures. They have started this cultural corner piece in the school newspaper, and every issue is celebration and learning about different cultures. I just took a page from the most recent one. And yesterday, Mr. Fowler and I had a visitor from our community, a grandmom, who kind of wanted to know about some of these different initiatives in our building, and we started showing her this slide, and we got to this slide. She said, "You know, to love one another, you really have to learn about one another." And that was a great quote. That really kind of stuck with me, and it was a reminder for me that that's something that we have to keep going with. This picture right here is a lesson from our eighth graders this year. The ELA department put together a day where they celebrated the United Nations International Day of Peace, and they put together a human rights lesson where kids got to reflect on different human rights, and they got to comment on them and have some discussion with one another. This is a summary of a day of service that some of our eighth grade students participated in this year. The top-left picture here, that's a picture of kids cleaning up the Whistah Hickon. The left picture is at William Jean's Library, kids cleaning that area up. The right picture is Colonial Neighborhood Council, the kids organizing canned food. And the middle picture there is different people at the mitzvah circle, and that's one that I got to go to, and I just wanted to share real quickly what that looks like is when you went there, the guy in charge would give you a note card, and it says, "Hey, I need you to go shopping for this family." And I read the note card, it gives me a description of this particular family, what happened, and gives me some sizes. So, you walk down these aisles and pick out clothes, and you put them in a bag, and you kind of package it all up, and then they ship it out to them. And I was just thinking, you know, what, for me personally, I was thinking, just reflecting on how fortunate I've been and how much more I should be doing for others, and then I'm walking around, and I'm listening to our kids talking, and they're having same conversations that are going on in my head, and it's just a time that kids get to really think about how important helping others are. This year, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Vidjik, that has started this best buddies program, and a way to include all of our kids in different activities, to respect differences. There's a picture in the middle, it's hard to see, but Mr. Fowler, he just finished bowling three strikes and then kind of high-fiving somebody. And I wanted to end here with a quick video, and when we talk about respecting differences and the moral code of kids, we had a particular young man, I told his dad today I was going to share this, which he was very excited about. The picture on the right's a young man, eighth grader, who's wrestling this year, who finished wrestling. He has cerebral palsy. He came to us maybe October, he had a feeding tube in him, and he said, "Hey, I want to wrestle." And I said, "Okay," but in my head, I was thinking, "You're going to wrestle? Like, this is a big deal." And he, you know, we worked it all out, and I'm thinking, "Who's he going to wrestle against? Who are the other kids going to wrestle?" And all that in my head was kind of nonsense, because as soon as he got into that wrestling room with all our other kids, and we didn't prep them, our kids, he just showed up, and he was one of the guys within five minutes. And before every match, we don't go to the other team and say, "Hey, we have a student with, you know, cerebral palsy, wants to wrestle." We say, "Hey, we got a kid, you know, can we wrestle him?" Boom, and then we go, and, you know, I just wanted to show you one video. It's about two minutes of, and if you just pay particular attention to the kids' reactions on our team and their team, and it really speaks to how our kids really are. So, you know, I think that little clip kind of shows a good sample of how our kids really respect differences here. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fowler for our last.
It's a tough act to follow, but, you know, I also just wanted to acknowledge that I think sometimes diversity may send a message of, I think maybe sometimes people's first impulse is race. It's so much more than that. Obviously includes that, but there are things that go on, like making that possible. There's transportation that needs to be accommodated. There are students that take courses at the high school that are middle school kids. There are kids that take courses at the middle school that are CES students. It's at the high end of needs in a classroom where we have students that need to be challenged. We also have students that need one-on-one support with adults. So again, you know, really, just to sum it up again, it's a team effort, and diversity comes in lots of shapes and sizes. It's really just about meeting everyone's needs, whatever they happen to be. And we appreciate the Colonial School District's support. This Board of Directors has always been great in meeting the needs of our, our students and our communities. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Thank you so much. Your enthusiasm is contagious, I know, to other schools. And thank you so much for what you've done. That was terrific. I'm excited to see that. All right, there's one thing we'd like to add at this time. Mike, about the policy, the new, the new committee?
Superintendents.
Oh, the superintendent. Okay, then we'll do it then. All right, thank you. All right. Staff report. Any old business? What is, usually do for an old business? There really isn't nothing. And correspondence, I don't think, unless there's something that Dave has for correspondence. Okay, nothing. So now we can go to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Items A and B, board action is requested regarding the enclosed personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements. We also have a few extra duty and extra pay contracts. Need a motion?
And we need a motion to approve those? Do we motion? Thank you. A second on that? Thank you, Adam. Any discussion about the superintendent's report? Or the, any questions about the personnel? No questions? All right. Show hands to approve. All of us approve? Say aye. Great. Any that oppose? All right, that passes.
Just, just one other item before our student representative report. We have partnered with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association to review all district policies. So representatives from PSBA were on site approximately two weeks ago. They spent the day with us looking at former board minutes as well as our current policy book. They took it with them back to Mechanicsburg. And what's going on simultaneously with this review of policies is that our school board and Pennsyl, PSBA already use it, we will be moving to an electronic format for our board agendas called Board Docs. Very common in many districts. For those of you who still want paper, you still can have paper, but we're trying to, you know, decrease our digital foot, our, our footprint here, our pay, our carbon footprint, pardon me, increase our digital footprint. And so the nice thing about it is PSBA uses Board Docs. So as they start to update templates for our policies for this board to review, it will be integrated into that software. We expect the first round of policies to come in in early March. And I know the board is considering starting a policy committee, which is not uncommon in many districts, to review policies. They'll come in, as you look at our board policy book, the policies are in sections, the zeros, the 100s, 200s, all the way up to the 900s. So they'll come in in sections. This does not preclude any committee, current committee of the board, who would like to look at a policy in a more expeditious manner, to still bring that forward. We still can, just as we're doing with our volunteer policy, which we'll be talking about next month, because it needs to be updated with current laws. So this partnership with PSBA is going to be somewhat elongated. It should last over a year, but it's a, it's a good one. And so you'll start to see those changes coming in within a few weeks.
Thank you. And just to dovetail on that information, as Dr. Christian alluded to, we're starting a policy committee. The committee serves to review the new, to new policies and revise existing ones. The public is welcome to attend policy committee meetings, provide feedback on proposed revisions, or on new policy. And the committee recommendations will be submitted to the full board for approval at, or not approval at, meetings. So the public is welcome. That, that schedule has not been put up, is that right, on the website with it?
That's correct. They'll be advertised, just like we do for curriculum, community relations, facilities, FMT, and what we're thinking. We're trying to be mindful of the number of nights people are out. We don't need the community relations committee every month. That can run every other month, but we can do policy on the offsetting.
Intermittently. Oh, that's great.
Sure.
Thank you.
And just so everyone is reminded, the policy process is a deliberate one. It should be. We need to get it, we need to get it as accurate as possible. You want it to, you want policies to last for a long time. And we need to stay current with them. So it'll, they'll be under board review, and they require, require two readings before becoming policies that are enforced. That way, there's plenty of time for them to sit, allow for comment, allow for revisions before they become official.
Great. But we will be doing this expeditiously so we can get this moving since they've been, some of them are quite old.
Oxy莫onic statement. Deliberate, but as expeditiously as we can.
Just one, one clarifying question, Dr. Christian.
Sure.
Even though we're getting templates of policies from PSBA, that obviously does not preclude the board from amending those policies, revising them based on community feedback, other feedback.
Absolutely, absolutely. The templates will include state and federal mandates and suggested language that is used, quite frankly, by other districts, but it might not be, some of it may not be germane to Colonial, so they certainly can be amended.
So if you're interested in policies, we welcome you coming to our meetings.
It's riveting dialogue.
Thank you. All right.
I'm Derek Knob. I'm a junior at PW. I'm filling in for the senior student representative who couldn't be here tonight.
Yes, and I'm Maggie. I'm also a junior. Hi, everyone.
Okay. So for the student, student report, just a overview of things that are going on. We're currently in the third week of the second semester at PW, and we could say that a lot's been going on this past week with the delays and the day off because of weather. And of course, the Super Bowl win by the Eagles definitely creates a general environment of excitement for the students here. As for clubs, PW TSA this past weekend recently went and performed at the regional level. And that's a club that enters competitions that are technology-based. And to my knowledge, there are many PW students who placed and qualified for the state-level competition, and there are many first-place prize winners as well. And also, this upcoming week, another club at PW, DECA, which is a competition based around business events, will be performing at the state level. And there are over 30 qualifiers from PW, and from there, they'll, they'll compete to potentially move on to the national level. Another thing from PW, students are preparing for the Spring Musical this year, which is the theory of relativity, or the theory of everything. And students are working very hard on that, preparing to perform, and that will be performed in the spring.
As for most recently, yesterday, we had Cupid's Cuties at PW, and that is a very serious Valentine's Day tradition. We love it. And the roses are, a bunch of roses and poems and songs are delivered by seniors and one of the teachers at PW. And this all benefits student council. Also, winter sports are currently coming to a close. However, many teams are advancing to the playoffs, and we are super excited because the boys' basketball team is number 24 in the nation. And we are super proud of that and very excited to go to the playoffs. And lastly, the students are very excited about the new gymnasium. That kind of goes hand in hand with the basketball team. And we can kind of see that being built throughout the school. We see it through the windows, and it's very exciting to know that we will have that ready hopefully by the end of the summer. Thank you.
You're both juniors, is that right?
Yes.
So you'll be enjoying that next year. You will definitely get a chance to enjoy it. Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, along with the boys going to the playoffs, that the girls' basketball team is also starting in the playoffs next Tuesday are the boys, and Wednesday are the girls. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the girls as well.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going on to new business. We have many overnight and out-of-state student trip requests. And Rosemary, do you want to?
So Dr. Jason Bakani, the high school principal, and Mr. Robert Fowler, the Colonial Middle School principal, are requesting board approval for the following student trips. PW High School students to attend the PA DECA State Career Development Conference in Hershey, PA from February 21st to the 23rd. PW High School FBLA Regional Winners to attend the State Leadership Conference in Hershey, PA on April 9th to the 11th. PW High School UNICEF Club to attend the UNICEF Students Summit in Washington, DC on March 10th. PW High School students to visit the Museum of Modern Art in New York City on May 22nd. PW High School Indoor Guard to participate in out-of-state competitions on March 3rd, March 17th, and April 21st. PW High School and Colonial Middle School students to attend the Technology Student Association in Champion, PA from April 18th to the 21st, and the TSA National Conference and Competition in Atlanta, Georgia from June 22nd to the 26th. The Colonial Middle School Oceanography Club to visit the Chinkatique Bayfield Station in Wallops Island, Virginia from May 14th to the 18th. And Colonial Middle School seventh-grade students to visit the Adventure Aquarium in Camden, New Jersey on April 27th, 2018. And I make a motion that we approve all of these trips for the students.
Oops, I wasn't wrong there. Now we have a conference request for an adult. Andrew Bogger, Director of Technology, seeks board approval to attend the COSN Conference in Washington, DC from March 12th to the 15th. Drew, you want to tell us what that is?
Sure. It's the Consortium for School Networking. It's a national conference in Washington where we look mostly at infrastructure items in terms of wireless technology and new technologies of the future.
And that, that's a motion. We'll have to approve that? Is that right? Okay. That's a motion to approve. May I have a second for that? Thank you. Any questions or discussions about that? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll pass that. There it goes. Okay.
Contracted bus driver approval. Kathy Ellis, Director of Transportation, requests approval of school bus drivers employed by First Student and SIG for the 27-18 school year, and that's enclosure 28. I make a motion to approve that.
All in favor of approving that? Say aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries. And Eunice, go ahead for the next one.
Make a motion to approve Godshaw Kane O'Rourke Architects LLC to conduct Colonial Middle School site survey, preparation of technical base plans of the existing building, preparation of preliminary HVAC design, scope of underground sanitary piping, and creation of an auditorium seating layout. Scope of work not to exceed $50,000.
Any questions about that? Discussions? Is that a motion? You made a motion. Now with a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Adam?
I would like to make a motion to approve its agenda item E, a couple assessment appeal settlements that were discussed at, at executive session with the board.
Do you want to mention each parcel number?
Yes. One is parcel number 490000060-8 in Plymouth Township, and parcel number 49-00-04509-03-2 also in Plymouth Township.
Second. Any seconds for that? Oh, you have a second. Thank you. Anybody, any discussions about those?
Yeah. Dave, could you elaborate on what this means financially to the school district?
Yes, these two settlements, which date back to 2013 and 2014, are successful assessment appeals. We did negotiate, didn't get as high as we wanted, but the settlement retroacted back to 13 and 14 will net the district about $283,000 between both of these properties. So it was a very good job by the district and our, our solicitor.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of approving those assessment deals? Thank you. Any opposed? I'm in there too. I'm yes, I'm sorry. Vote. Are any opposed? No. All right, thank you. That passes. Mel?
I seek approval of agreement and release between the Colonial's Board of School Directors and employee number 100539, effective February 15th, 2018. Obviously, this is a personnel issue, so must remain confidential. But congratulations, Dr. Rodriguez, on a job well done. And that is a motion.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion about this?
There shouldn't be any discussion.
No, because it's confidential. Right, we did discuss that in executive session.
Can you discuss it in executive session?
And we did do that in executive session, so we're all very aware of this. All right, all those in agreement with the separation? Thank you. Any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Karen Burke, our Director of Pupil Services and Special Education, seeks board approval for placement of one student at TLC Leadership Academy of Audubon. Due to restrictions regarding student confidentiality and privacy, this agreement was reviewed in executive session. That is a motion to approve that placement.
Second.
Second? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, thank you. Motion carries. Eunice?
Board approval is requested for the bid recommendation for the PWHS and CES campus electric service upgrade, and that is enclosure 33. And that is to upgrade the, our electrical service to accommodate the West Gym and the power requirements.
All right. Any questions about that for anyone? And that's a motion to approve. A second on that, please? Second? Thank you. All in favor of agreeing to that? Say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, that carries. Thank you. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Our first report will be a brief one. My name, despite what the sign says, is not Mike Clark. He's my partner. My name is Peter Remuso. Mike was feeling under the weather tonight, so he could not be here. Very briefly, we are very honored to have the opportunity to serve the Colonial School District, and we look forward to earning the board's trust every day with, with hard work and responsiveness. And we've already had some very good meetings with the superintendent and are moving forward on some policy issues. And we look forward to serving the school district. Thank you.
Welcome, Peter. Thank you. All right, let's go on to our committee reports. The intermediate unit report, I'll give that. Last month, the Board of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met on January 24th at their Norristown Building. At that time, I was elected Treasurer of the Board, so I'd like to inform you about the membership dues, which our school district pays each year to the IU, and what we get for that investment. The membership services budget comprised of three types of services. The Office of Community and Government Relations. It's from this office that we get our news about pending state and federal legislation, plus the latest regulations and standards which affect our students. The MCIU also offers speakers and discussion panels to help superintendents and school board members understand new laws. The Office of Professional Learning offers more than 40 half-day meetings annually to provide leadership and support to district personnel in areas include language arts, STEM initiatives, best practices for teachers and principals, cutting-edge tools for gifted and special education, plus college and career readiness. MCIU also hosts academic competitions that all our students participate in, and throughout the county, too. Reading Olympics, Math 24, and other STEM competitions, plus many others, too, so they host those. And finally, the Office of Technology Services offers workshops, grant writing support, along with many software and internet content provider packages at consortium discount pricing, which our school avails themselves of also. Colonial's membership fee is determined by our enrollment, a weighted average of all the memberships of all the members' school districts, and our aid ratio. This year, our fee was $82,819, which is only $77 more than last year. And I believe this is money well And I believe this is money well spent with the MCIU. And that concludes our report. Thank you. All right. CMT? No?
The tech school board did meet this past Tuesday night for about two and a half hours, a bunch of issues. One was a personnel issue, which I obviously, again, cannot discuss, but it worked out pretty well. We also spoke about the number of our students who were involved in Skills USA contest, and that is really a prestigious event. This is a county-wide competition. Winners go on to a state competition, and if they win that, they go into a national competition. We had three or four of our students who won gold medals, and will be moving on to the state competition, and we'll be honoring them next month. As I mentioned before, this is Mr. Slough's last year as a director of the tech school. He will be retiring in June, and Mr. Schramm, who will be taking his place as the current assistant director, and he shared with us his plans and initiatives to increase the number of students attending the tech school and to increase programs. And it was a very impressive presentation, and I'm sure it will reap rewards for all the districts in the near future. And we are also in the process of finalizing a new assistant director, currently where Mr. Schramm is. There were eight very qualified candidates interviewed. It was cut down to two. One of them priced himself out of the competition, so we'll be making an announcement probably next month as new assistant director. That's my report.
Thank you, Mel. HR? Mel, you want to stay on?
No, a report.
A report. Okay. Finance. Adam?
Yes, the Finance Committee met recently, and Mr. Sobloski gave us a presentation just looking at some of the fiscal challenges in front of the district based on increases in fixed costs, the ACW1 Index, which limits our ability to raise taxes and generate new revenue, and costs coming up regarding building projects and increased enrollment. You know, this is part of the budget process, and that's ongoing in preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. I also wanted to turn it over to Mr. Sobloski just briefly to speak about the governor's budget proposal.
Sure. Thank you. We did present the start of the budget, so we are, it is underway. It's very early in the process. The day after our meeting, last Tuesday, the governor made his budget address, very short, to the point. He wants to, he is a big supporter of education. He is proposing an additional $100 million in basic ed subsidy, and he is proposing that there will be no personal income taxes, but he is pushing for a new severance tax on the shale oil, shale gas. So, with the budget process at this early stage, we are expecting that the numbers will become much clearer as we get through March, April, and then into May for the final budget.
All right. Curriculum. Our curriculum committee met just this past Monday, February 12th, at Plymouth Elementary School. There, with the help of curriculum supervisors, teachers, and the principal, we had a chance to understand what GAIN looks like in the classrooms. GAIN is a newly implemented growth and intervention network which reaches every student in K through 5 and supports literacy and math advancement relative to each student's level proficiency. GAIN is a prescriptive tool since reading specialists and coaches utilize diagnostic assessments and then customize a program for 30 minutes each day to address a student's needs. No new content is explored, but the specialists and coaches helps students to delve deeper into comprehension and fluency of their subject material. GAIN has been introduced to our faculty over the last two years with significant professional development and resource identification, and the rollout started just this past September. Just in a few months of implementation, teachers have seen real progress in our students. It's really encouraging. And they continue to develop and incorporate GAIN in all the classrooms. Our elementary educators have done an outstanding job with this initiative. We are very proud of their and our students' efforts in this case. We saw video clips of students describing how much they enjoyed their GAIN time during the day. It was really, really wonderful to see. It's a very comprehensive, enlightening presentation. We're anxious to hear more about our students' progress in GAIN. And that concludes our report. Thank you. And just so you know, you're all welcome to attend the next curriculum committee meeting, which has, I don't think, have we picked the date for that? Or the place? That's forthcoming, but it'll be on the website, so please look for that, and you're welcome to attend. Thank you. Community Relations. Eunice? What's next? Oh, facility, bigger pardon.
So, the Facilities Management Committee met Monday, March 5th, and we had some great hospitality from Colonial Middle School. We met over there to talk about primarily the need for renovations to accommodate our increased enrollment and also the need to renovate one of our older buildings in the district. GKR Architects presented a couple of options for renovating the middle school, one of which included a new gymnasium, both of which included additional classrooms to accommodate science and art and the additional student enrollment. And all of those proposed plans that we've looked at so far, those are all posted on the website, so you can look at them in more detail if you weren't able to attend the meeting. And this is an ongoing process, no final decision about the drawings, but as you heard earlier, we approved the preliminary work so that we can have our folks start assessing what we're working with in those buildings. It would also include renovations to this building, smaller in scope, but to accommodate the increases in enrollment that are anticipated. Dr. Christian, if you want to add anything to that?
Should we talk about the RFP now? Let's, the board has, consensus of the board has been to give direction to our superintendent to have an RFP for this Colonial Middle School renovation project. In other words, a request proposal for other architects. It's such an extensive project. It's the most expensive we have gone out for yet. It could reach as high as, some of the proposals are $80 million. So, for that sort of number, we feel it's fiscally responsible to see what our options are out there. It's part of our due diligence, and majority of the board is agreement, that we should move forward in seeking other options, other proposals. I confirm with Dr. Christian the schedule for the RFP reviews, and it will not impact our project at all. We're going to be doing it expeditiously, is that right? We're going to try to do so.
Our best.
Do our best. So, that's what we'll be going forward. There'll be an RFP on that.
Just have a question based on the, what was discussed at the meeting. My understanding is that the Plan Con deadline that had been discussed at the Facilities Committee meeting has now been extended.
Extended by a year.
By the state, correct? Or by the Pennsylvania Department of Education? So, now that's 2021, is that correct?
2020.
2020?
It's 20, yes.
Or 21?
Or is it 21?
Extended by two years.
Oh, by two years? I thought it was one year. Oh, that's great.
That essentially allows the district to seek reimbursement on the project, which we estimate for a project in scope of this size to be approximately a million to a million and a half dollars. So, it was, you had to have contracts signed by spring of '19, and now it's 2021. We don't, we presently, you know, don't have a contract with GKO. We have, the board earlier tonight has authorized to do the scope of work that we need to keep the project moving. The district will own those documents. My feelings on this, you know, Mrs. Doll spoke earlier, and certainly respect her opinion and history with the district. My experience with GKO obviously is limited since I just started six months ago, and I have found them to be responsive to my requests, and we, I think we should seriously consider the options that they gave us. You know, it's my understanding from looking through the records of the district that the district has used different architects over the years, some with more success than others. In my opinion, if the board wishes for administration to seek additional proposals before committing millions of dollars, millions of taxpayer dollars, this can be a worthwhile endeavor. However, we still need to be mindful. We want a school that's going to last another 50 to 60 years. And we need to keep in mind, too, that we have to keep the project moving forward. So, we'll certainly get out there. I've contacted several of my colleagues who have worked in the industry and gotten references on architecture firms. I've, certainly, GKO should be considered for their efforts in the past with the high school and the elementary schools, but we really need to make sure that we're looking to resolve this in the spring because we know the growth is there for our students, and the students are coming, you know, as I said at the FMT meeting, first grade class is in the 450 range, kindergarten class currently is in the 420 range, and our current middle school classes are in the 350 to 360 range. So, you know, that's coming with, obviously, also future predictions of increased enrollment. Thank you.
To just ask a question, Leslie. We had a facilities meeting and also a finance meeting on 3/5, and this was never discussed. I'm just curious as to when the discussion took place about going out for an RFP. I got a phone call telling me it was happening. I was not, did not participate in any conversation about going out for an RFP, and I'd like to know at what meeting it was discussed.
It wasn't discussed in a meeting. I actually thought it up after our last meeting, after our last presentation by GKO. I started to worry about that amount of money and said, we should, this is a lot of taxpayer money, and I would feel fiscally irresponsible not doing it. So, I called Felix, I asked, and we started just to talk one-on-one, and that's how, it wasn't decided when you were called. We were asking, we were polling people's opinions.
No, that's not the case. I got a phone call, and I believe Mel can verify, you got the same phone call, and I was told we decided we're going out for an RFP.
From whom did you get this phone?
I got that from Felix.
Well, I can't speak for Felix.
So...
He is not here, and I can't speak for him.
I just would like to say one more time that I believe, and I think Mr. Shupack made mention of this at our last meeting, about trying to be above board and letting everyone know what's going on, and you even, because I even went back and looked at it, said, as opposed to how it's been done for years and years. This never happened before, and I really have an issue with it happening now, and I just would like us, as a board of nine, to talk about things as a board of nine. And I'm just putting that out there one more time.
Well, then, let's talk about it right now. How do you feel about going out for an RFP? How do you feel about? Do you think it's a good thing to do or not a good thing to do?
I think the time, again, it's the timing. We have already had GKO do drawings, do some initial work. We have spent money, although we have not paid them yet. We have spent money. If we were considering an RFP, I think it should have happened before we spent taxpayer money because anything they've done to date is their possession. They own it. So, if we are going to go to another firm, we're going to have to pay for some of the same work again. And I think that we need to be aware and conscious of spending money.
Do you think we, yeah, that's what I am aware of. I'm saying for something that's between the $50 and $80 million range, it would be irresponsible for our taxpayers, 80% of whom do not have children in our schools. I'm considering them, along with 20% that do have children in our schools,
Okay.
to just go with their, first, their one and only number and not hear any other numbers. That's not going to market place.
Well, it's not one and only number. They came with multiple numbers with multiple proposals.
But it's from one place. It's only from one place.
It is from one place.
And I don't think that's, do you think that's the responsible thing to do for that kind of? We've never had this large of a project in this school district, in my history.
We just finished $40 million at the high school, plus a $12 million gym, so that's a $52 million project, which is larger than what this one ultimately might cost. Yes, there is an $80 million proposal, but that's not one that the board, in conversation among all nine of us, seem to be leaning towards. So, yes, it's a huge project, and I do think we have to be fiscally responsible. I also have to say that we have, on my term, time on the board, have dealt, I've dealt with three different architect firms, and we've had issues in responsiveness, in timeliness, in cost overruns, and I think the best thing that we can do is look at the experience we had on the high school. We were on time and on budget, and all the numbers that GKO proposed were accurate. Almost, I forget, there was a number...
I don't want to not consider them. I think, but if they could sharpen their pencils and see what else we can do, to come down a little bit from the one number that they've given us, which was $55 million.
I'm not arguing the point of an RFP.
Oh, okay.
I'm arguing the point of how we went about this decision.
I'll tag onto that, say, I am all in favor of an RFP. I also didn't like the way it was handled. I got a phone call as well, saying, we have decided that we're going for an RFP. And my response is, I don't remember being in that meeting. Did I miss something? And I said, who are the "we"? And it was just, I never got an answer. And once again, it's the process, not what we're doing. As Sue mentions, we're supposed to be a board where we all consider each other's opinions and validate each other or contradict each other. But it never happened.
Well, the way it hap-
We were just told we were going to do this, and that's not why I'm serving up here, to be told what to do by one or two people.
Thank you. You don't have to vote for the RFP if you don't want to do it. That's, I mean, what happened is it started as, after-
I do want to do the RFP.
Oh, good. Great.
I just don't like the way you guys did it.
Well, as I said, I cannot speak for anyone that called you because I didn't call you, and I didn't say that.
But Leslie, you were part of the discussion. You said, I came up with the idea. I called Felix. We decided we should go for an RFP.
Sue, this is-
Well, then, how did it happen?
I started a call. I said, what do you, does this sound odd, this amount? I said, I'll call a few people, and we just started to talk about it. Since when, we had to also rush this?
Did you call me?
No, Felix called you. That's, he said, I'll talk to you. That's, he said, "I'll talk to you."
Felix called us with a fate of company.
Well, that was, I wasn't on that phone call, so I can't tell you that.
Well, I just have to say that I got that phone call from Felix, Mel got that phone call, Kathy Paduzzi got that phone call, and so, did Mel call any of you and tell you that we were going out for an RFP? Or did you have a conversation on the subject?
Leslie did not call me.
Okay. Did he call you and tell you that we were doing an RFP?
He asked for my thought.
Okay. And you?
Yeah, he asked for my thought.
You didn't get a call at all? So you didn't know about it until now?
Well, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Oh, I'm not, I don't either. I'm just asking, did you get a phone call and did you have a conversation about it?
I don't think that I did. I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
If we end up choosing someone other than Gottschall, just $50,000, this is just down the drain?
No. $28,000, I understand, is engineering report, which we-
The scope of work not to exceed $50,000.
I asked them, $28,000 is for engineering firm work, which we will get that report. We own that report, because we'll be paying the engineer. So that's $28,000 is what we will get from the engineer.
So $22,000 we'd swallow.
We perhaps save a million or two, maybe five million, perhaps?
Perhaps, perhaps.
I mean, I'm looking for savings on that.
I would just repeat what others have said. I mean, I've also seen Gottschall do the high school, do the gym, do Plymouth Elementary, do Rich Park Elementary, and their first-class outfit. That's all I would say. But again, I do not oppose the concept of an RFP.
Great.
I just wish it would be more open.
And Sue, do you oppose the contract, the concept of RFP?
No, I said it.
Oh.
I do not oppose the concept of an RFP. I am asking that we are more open and more honest with each other as a board of nine, not as a board of six.
But we're not a board of six. That's why we're all voting here tonight. We're not a board of six.
Except the decision, we were told the decision had been made.
That, I can't help you there, because I didn't say that. I just called and, I actually, I think I called Adam and asked. I may have called Eunice, said, "What do you think about this? This is bothering me."
I get that. You spoke to several of these people.
And Felix spoke to you, too? That was how we did it?
No, he didn't. He did not.
Oh, well, then, you'll have to take that up with Felix. I'm sorry.
He told me it was happening.
All right. Well, again, I can't speak for him.
I think there may be some differences in opinions about how it was handled. If we're going to function as a board of nine, taking this fight to a public board meeting is maybe not the best message of unity. I think if we can agree that we think we need to responsibly move forward with an RFP to determine whether we are going to spend tens of millions of dollars of taxpayer money on projects and make sure that not only we have the best price, but the best option, the best solution for our school district. And so, you know, other proposals may include exactly, you know, or something very similar to what the initial proposal was, or could be something even more beneficial to our district. Can we agree to move on and not have this argument here?
Eunice, I, I am, my, my, my question is, and my objection is, that these things happen. It happened about the solicitor. It happened about the architect, and we are told that it's happening. So that's all happening somewhere other than in a committee meeting, in executive session, or at a board meeting. So I'm not sure where we're supposed to voice our opinions when we're not part of the discussion. So to me, the only place to do so is when, all of a sudden, we're going out for an RFP. And I was told that we're going out for an RFP. So to me, the only place to have that conversation is here, because I didn't get to voice my opinion in a conversation, in executive session, in committee. We just had a committee meeting. I get now that Leslie said she didn't think of it until after the committee meeting. But then, there could have been conversation in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting.
But that's not, that's, you can't do that.
No, but at least to let us know you were going to do this.
Well, we're discussing now.
It could have been a committee meeting, which it should have been, in the committee meeting.
I didn't think of it until afterwards. And it bothered me, that much money we were going to spend without looking at some other options or some other bids.
And I would just add on to that, that I think that the number you threw out there at $80 million is way over what we're talking about. If I remember what we talked about at the committee meeting.
$55, $40.
$55, no, it was $50 some for the middle school and about $6 million for here.
It could be, so the option without a new gym, sorry, the option without a new gym would range between $46, $46.5 million at the middle school, with a new gym, $52.5 to $53, $3 million. Additionally, renovations here ranging from $6.5 to $18.5.
That's over $60 million.
Additionally, there are financing costs and other costs associated with borrowing money that would be needed to do this project.
Thank you. It is the most expensive project this school district has entered in years, and it's, it would be irresponsible for us not to look for, I thought that if you were, let's discuss it now, and it's on the agenda. I mean, it's on, we've added, we've added to the agenda, we've added it to the agenda right now as an amendment, and I'm glad we're discussing it. So if you don't want to go for an RFP, then, Sue, don't vote for it.
It's not, we do want to go for it, don't?
Right, then, that's great.
That's understanding that much of this friction started with the added agenda item a couple of months ago, and here we go again.
So I think we can, in summary, my opinion is, number one, there's consensus now that an RFP is a good thing. It's a responsible thing to do.
Seems to be, yes.
For a project that could potentially cost tens of millions of dollars. We agree on that. We're talking about consensus among the school board, and so, that's obviously where the difference of opinions are. And it's essential that this board come together and we get consensus on these items. It's not a voting item tonight, because we don't have a contract with our current GKO, unlike the solicitor situation. However, that doesn't minimize the need for consensus among the board. And so, we'll do the work. The administration will do the work. And, you know, Terry's ill tonight. He certainly would be here. Strong advocate for GKO. I will speak with Kevin Gottschall directly. But we need to, the bigger picture here for the board is functioning with consensus. Respectful disagreements can take place, take place in committee meetings, at board meetings, but we need nine folks to move forward together, and that's my recommendation. So I certainly understand the concept of responsibility in getting an RFP, but I think there's going to be no agreement tonight that there was consensus reached on this topic. But we'll do the work, and we will come back, and it will be a very open process with all nine, all nine board members and the community having input.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I think, you know, I was, just received a telephone call, as I had mentioned, and, you know, I had just responded, speaking only for myself, you know, that I thought it couldn't hurt to do, to do the RFP. And, you know, I think it does make sense to do due diligence before we're spending a lot of taxpayer money, and GKO should obviously participate, and they may be the firm that's ultimately selected.
And I would just add to that, when I received my call, I was very frank, very open, and Felix was very open with me, thank goodness, and this is going to be an open and honest RFP. I was assured of that.
Dr. Christen, could, could this item, just for openness and clarity, could this item have been part of a Yellow Page to the agenda, or just so that it was part of the agenda, or is it just something that we just add on again? I mean, if it were to be done again, you know, I mean, I know it's already a done deal.
It could come in any, any form the board would wish. I agree with Mel, ideally, this would come through the committee process and then move forward. You know, that's what we're trying to move towards. That's what I'm accustomed to.
Timing is an issue, though. We have to get on this right away. If we wait for another committee meeting a month from now, it would be-
No, I was talking about any item.
Any item. And it would be, except now we're trying to get this so that perhaps-
I understand that. We can always, and we have in the past, Leslie called special committee meetings or special meetings to discuss things. So I think in the future, that's what we should, should do.
And we could do that. I also remember being called by you, polling my opinion, saying, "Do you think we should, we're going to think going forward, this, can we do this? This has happened in the past, the last six years I've been on this board. I know I have been called about items to vote on. What is my opinion?"
But you were never called and told what was happening.
Nope, I absolutely was not, and I could not characterize what happened in that phone call. I wasn't there.
Thank you.
And again, Leslie, I have to respond to that a little bit. You've been on the board six years now. I've been on eight years. In past years, we've had some pretty vigorous debates and disagreements in our committee meetings. But once we exited the committee meeting, we said, "Okay, I respect the other person's decision. I respect the majority decision." That's all we're looking for.
Okay. Yes, Community Relations, Student Life and Safety and Wellness. This committee-
Do we not have a motion to amend the agenda and then a motion for the RFP? Are we doing that?
No, there's no motion for the RFP. As the superintendent said, it's a consensus of the board to direct the administration to go out and seek information through an RFP. So there's no motion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This committee met on Monday night at Plymouth Elementary School following the curriculum committee meeting. Karen Burke shared information about the formation of CUSP, Colonial Understand Special Education, which will promote collaboration between parents and Colonial staff. The first CUSP event will be held on Thursday, March 22, at 7:00 p.m. in this room. There was an informational preview of Colonial's Revised Policy Number 916 regarding volunteers. After additional review, the revised policy will be brought to the public board meeting for consideration. Requests for student trips were reviewed. Information regarding the PW Spring Musical Matinee and Luncheon was updated, as was the progress being made to ensure that our district website is ADA compliant, so that someone who has visual issues will receive a description of photographs that are on the website, and someone who has difficulty reading will be able to hear what is going on, a description as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Committee.
So the Montgomery County School District Legislative Committee did not meet in January, and I would just point out a couple of things, however, with respect to legislative issues. In addition to the budget items that Dave described earlier in the governor's budget, the governor is also proposing a $50 million strategic investment in job training and the launch of PA Smart, which is focusing on realigning workforce development from K-12 education, to really focus on career programs and make sure children get 21st century skills. So that'll be a big focus on increase in STEM and computer science education, apprenticeships, industry partnerships, career and technical education and STEM career pathways, and an increase to encourage employers to partner with colleges and universities, which I think will be a benefit both for us and for Central Monco and all of our districts. The other, the Senate Bill 2, which we issued a resolution opposing at our last board meeting, that continues to be an issue, and while it wouldn't necessarily immediately affect Colonial, it is something that will require ongoing advocacy, as will House Bill 1213, which was something that the board, I think, had issued a statement against last year. It keeps returning, and that's focusing on eliminating taxing body appeals of property assessments to benefit commercial properties at the expense of homeowners, undue appeals in the pipeline, locking in lower assessments, putting the burden on districts to prove assessments don't violate the Pennsylvania Constitution, and deeming constitutional assessments if the assessed value is lower of the amount of 844E2 or an amount comparable to assessments of similar properties in the same local community. So that's something that could really affect us and something that we need to keep an eye on. And so, you know, I encourage you to stay in touch with your local, your state legislators, because they will be able to keep you up to date and let them know your feelings on those, because those can affect our funding in a pretty significant way.
And I misspoke, I said twice about hearing and vision, and I, but I didn't speak correctly about people with hearing loss. They will have subtitles going across the screen so that they can be aware of what's being said. So it's going to require a great deal of work. I'm the community liaison for Conshohocken, and in the new Conshohocken Summer Spring Newsletter, there's an ad for the Conshohocken Rowing Center. And the Conshohocken Rowing Center is a rowing club that was formed through a public-private partnership between the borough of Conshohocken, who provided the land, Malvern Prep and the Havredford School, and they did the fundraising to build the rowing center. And one of the agreements in providing the land is that they would promote youth rowing and provide access to the river through the sport of rowing. And we have, in Conshohocken, we haven't made full use of what the possibilities are for the very first time. Last spring, we had several young people who participated in the spring rowing program, and it's free for Conshohocken youth. You have to live within the borough of Conshohocken. And so, the programs are for children, boys and girls, ages 13 to 17, and having that opportunity to learn how to row is a fabulous one, and so many of the colleges and universities have rowing teams. And for the very first time, Conshohocken Rowing Center is going to participate in the National Learn to Row Day on June 2, 2017, between 12:00 p.m. and 3:00 p.m., and that is open to everyone in the public and for all ages. So they'll put out information, and people will be able to sign up and be able to go out on the river. So I certainly hope that we have some of our students participating and some of our residents as well throughout the entire district on National Learn to Row Day. The Conshohocken Recreation Spring and Summer Activity Guide was just published, so on pages 13 and 14, they have full information about the rowing center and everything that's available there. Thank you.
Rose, may I have a question? The National Learn to Row Day, is that on 2018 also? Is it June 2? You said 2017. Is it also 2018?
Oh, I'm sorry. I gave the wrong date, yes. They must have had the wrong date in here.
Okay.
So, yeah. And I will, I will double check, and we can put out a correction.
Okay, thank you. Who else has municipal, any reports? No reports? Nothing, my worst? Okay, great, thanks. All right, that's the end of our reports. For your information, there are reports in the, in the back. There are enclosures 29 through 34, school activity, building report, athletic activity, director of technology report, and the report from our curriculum instruction committee. That's it. Now, any questions or comments, actually, comments from-
I'll just remind the public, the board welcomes your questions and your comments, but it's not a question-and-answer session with the board.
Are you saying we can't ask questions?
Surely ask questions, but the board is not going to answer them at this time.
No.
It's correct.
So can we get answers at all? And do you, why? Why? Why not? Why? We did it last time. They asked.
Standard practice, it's not a question-and-answer.
Last time, we asked, or last month.
You can take your time. Five minutes each, please.
Are they allowed to ask questions?
Nowhere in the procedures that were published does it say the board does not answer questions. It says that we can make comments, but nowhere does it say you cannot answer the questions asked. And I'm sorry, but they're not written in there.
Again, it's not a question-and-answer session. You have comments or questions.
We'll be directing questions. If you feel free to answer them, please. My name is Erin Salino. I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. So all I can say is, I am so disappointed. I took time off from work. I went, rearranged my whole schedule. I went to the facilities management meeting. I didn't even have childcare. I brought my six-year-old son with me, and none of this was mentioned. I gotta say, when I heard the architect speak, I was really impressed. He knew all these different issues. He discussed lighting. He discussed flows of students going from one end of the school to the other. He discussed changing classrooms here and labs in an efficient way to make them more usable for fifth graders as opposed to the junior high students that were here like 30, 40 years ago. He knew about the auditorium and taking it from 799 seats up to 900, although I will say I did suggest adding a slight second level, which he said he'd take into advisement. But the fact is that he put so much effort into his work, and he put out these plans, which were on your website, and all of the public here and those watching, and those that we've spread the news saying, "Hey, look at these plans. This is affecting your tax dollars. This is going to affect your children's education." And right now, I feel like I was deceived. Why did I come to a meeting when you weren't intending to use his plans? Why ask for public input? Since you obviously can't answer those questions, I'm, I'm really frustrated, and honestly, I'm pissed off. I took time away from my day. I rearranged everything to go to these meetings, and you say you want public input. You say you want transparency. And obviously, based on what was going on here tonight, there's not even transparency in the board. So how do you expect to earn our trust in what we're paying a lot of money for and then get this kind of attitude and this kind of lack of respect back? And I'm speaking for me. I mean, everyone here has the opportunity to speak as well, but I'm just incredibly disappointed. So, based on the plans that are on the website, it was somewhere between like $40-some million to $60 million. And honestly, if the $60 million, whatever it was, is picked, I'd be happy with that, because my kids are going to go there, and my property values are going to go up, because we're going to have a state-of-the-art facility, and I think the most expensive one had a really cool gym and an extra athletic room. That's awesome. I'd be willing to pay extra tax dollars for that. But what I don't care for is this whole issue here. So I do have a question. So the, I, we heard earlier that the state, I'm sorry if I can't remember the name of the actual thing, was the one, the one and a half million dollar grant or reimbursement, monies from the state. I forgot the name. Yes, Plan Con. So I heard that was changed, I heard about that yesterday, that was extended to 2021. But when did you hear about that? Because if you made this decision last week after that committee's meeting, before that decision was made, I have serious concerns with that, because that means that really you are putting at risk $1 to $1.5 million from the state. So if this decision was made before that decision was made public, I have serious issues as a taxpayer. That's not responsible. So get your story straight. It's not a laughing matter. It's a very serious matter. People are watching this. They're going to keep watching this. People are going to keep coming to these meetings. I will keep rearranging my schedule to go to these committee meetings as I can, as much as possible, but it's about transparency, and that's obvious, it's not happening here. And honestly, I have no, no problems with an RFP if it was mentioned prior to this presentation, because this, I put a lot of effort into it.
One minute, please.
I'm sorry, how much was that? Am I done? One minute? Sorry. I'm one of those people who can't hear. So if he put that much effort into it, how much is he charging for those documents? How much did he, time did he put into to learn about the flow of our schools and making sure students can get from one end of the school to the other, and how that they have to build outside stairs so the contractors are nowhere near those students during the construction period? Those are all things that take time and money, and if you were thinking of an RFP, you should have done that like a year ago, when this was actually being discussed. And my other question, which I know you won't answer, is, do you actually have someone in mind, similar to the solicitor?
15 seconds.
All right. All right. Thank you for your time. And if anyone wants to answer any of my questions, I will send you my email address. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Beth Petrino. I was also at the facilities meeting, and I'm just blown away. I'm blown away for so many reasons. We stood here last month, and person after person walked up here and said, we want a board we can trust and we can believe in. Board members put statements out there accusing bloggers, news reporters, of saying things about them that were inappropriate. And now, here we are again. The same thing. Not one thing was mentioned at that facilities meeting where we sat and listened. And then yesterday, when the final agenda came out, nothing on the agenda when apparently you all clearly had phone calls and knew this was taking place. So who are you trying to put one over on? Because you know what? We teach our children that go to this school to be respectful and responsible and to work together. And perhaps a lot of you need to go back and sit in those classrooms and learn those skills because this is absolutely unacceptable. Thank you.
This is like deja vu. My name is Chris Epstein. I'm a resident of Plymouth Colonial School District. I just have a couple of things. First, I want to thank Dr. Christian in his efforts to appease all the parties during this meeting tonight. I really do appreciate his efforts in that and his knowledge that he's brought to the table on so many different things that were brought up. So I do appreciate that. I know there are teachers in this room today. We teach a couple of different things in our classrooms. In case you might need reminding, there's this thing called collaboration. We teach our students how to collaborate with one another. These are our teachers and our parents who try to teach that. You are our leaders. You should be modeling that collaboration so that they know what to expect. This is not happening, and you guys should be ashamed of yourselves. I'm really sorry to say, as much respect as I have for our district and our, you know, the people that volunteer their time, this is just not fair. We had a whole discussion about, from the middle school principal and vice principals, who you are when no one's looking, how important that is. That's your character. We care about that. Not only are you our leaders, you're also handling our money, our students. You know, there's a lot here at stake, and we can't even trust you. I was at that meeting as well last week, and I thought it went very well. Lots of questions were asked, you know? But why do we have committee meetings if there, things are happening after that meeting out of the view of the public who is attending those meetings and even out of the view of some of your fellow board members? And another comment that I would like to make is that, just so you know, the architect does not decide how much the project costs. The contractor does. So you're talking about spending all this money. The architect comes up with the plans that meet what our expectations are for our students, and it's the contractors that determine the price. Okay? So, boy, I can't even, I can't even... I had some questions, actually, and I'm kind of disappointed. I'm going to ask them, but I'm going to know that we're not going to get answers. How much do we currently pay our architects? Okay? Do we pay by the hour? Do we pay by the project? How much do we pay for them? I hope you know that because if you're going out for an RFP, I'd at least like to know how much we are already paying. And we would like to know as taxpayers how much we are already paying. How many hours has our current architect spent on the CMS project? He's not doing it out of the goodness of his heart. He's doing it out of the directives that were given to him from previous board members and committees over the last couple of years. So he has put in time. There have been time spent for site surveys. You bring in a new architect, they're not going to just come up with a plan overnight. They're going to have to walk through that building and see what its current limitations are. That's going to take a lot of time. That's going to take a lot of money. And there's a lot more to this than just, you know? And I appreciate that you want to do your due diligence and make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck because as a taxpayer, that's what I would like. But there's a lot behind the scenes to go into a decision to even ask about an RFP. So, you know, I'm just disgusted, as are many people here. But I do want to say, please, if you don't know what collaboration is, you can Google it because it'll go a long way in this board.
Hello, Deanna Durante, White Marsh Township. And for those of you who don't know, I'm also a 1997 graduate of Plymouth White Marsh High School. Go Colonials! Just wanted to say that as well. I was looking at the minutes, first of all, and I just want to mention that these appear to be a paraphrase of the minutes and are not exact. And so when I asked Felix to direct me to minutes of meetings where there had been policy issues addressed previously, the part there that was left out was that he could not address me to where these incredibly pressing policy issues that warranted the change of the solicitor were ever in writing. So I just wanted to state that for the record here. Also, and I know that all of a sudden now, we're not going to get questions to answers now that we've had a changing of the solicitor, but Leslie had mentioned, I didn't make that call. I called Felix. But no, I said, I'll call a few people. And so you can understand, whereas when I'm sitting there listening to this, well, did you call anybody? Did you not call anybody? Did you just call Felix? Did you call anyone here? And Adam, you have always said, whenever we have questions, you feel free, you know, we should contact you, and you will answer them. So tonight, I'm asking you how you feel about this, no questions being answered here tonight when people have left their homes and their children or skipped dinner to come here to be a part of the meeting, to be a part of this process that you have said you want us engaged in, but then you're telling us that you won't answer any questions for us. I'd like to know the context of your phone call. Who called you? What was said? Eunice, you talked about getting a phone call. Rosemary says she didn't get a phone call. Jennifer didn't get a phone call. I want to know what was all in your phone calls? Who made them? Did you then call anyone? Did Leslie, in fact, call anyone even though she said, I'll make a few phone calls, I'll call a few people? And kind of who this "we" decided was? Because you said it was the consensus of the board, but I didn't hear consensus of the board until they brought all this out. Yes, they'll do an RFP, but you're speaking for the entire board when clearly there were some board members who weren't in a consensus with this because there was no discussion of this. And so I'm asking for you to answer our questions this evening because people are here taking time from their schedules. And as you can hear, it's raining, so we really have no other place to be.
Again, this is not a question and answer session. Thank you for your comments.
I understand that. I understand that. Thank you.
The question for... That's right. What if they want to answer? They're not allowed to answer?
On advice of counsel, they are not allowed to answer our questions, it appears.
It's not what this part of the meeting is about. It's for comments and questions from the public. It's not a question and answer session.
So we ask the questions, when do they get answered, then? When do I get an answer to my questions?
We're taking note of your questions.
And then the answers will be where? Where will they be answered?
This is not a question and answer session. This is standard practice of every board. We'll take note of the questions.
It's not the standard and practice of this board. We had questions answered last month when we were all here. They answered our questions, the ones they wanted or felt like answering. But you can't say it's standard practice. Is it standard practice since you've taken over as solicitor?
It's standard practice of any municipal government. So you're welcome to make your comment. You're welcome to ask your questions.
It should be no longer five minutes.
It's not a question and answer session.
Next.
Wow. And you're all just sitting there, okay? They're so quick. Okay.
Hi, my name's Mark Epstein, and I am a White Marsh resident. First, I'd like to remind the solicitor that he's not moderator, and I don't believe he gets to decide whether or not the board members answer questions. Secondly, as a reminder, I'd like to remind you guys that there's cameras watching all this, so even if something doesn't get recorded in paper, it does get recorded in video for all of the taxpayers to watch. And while you may have this story about how the architect was, the RFP was decided in the last few days, we all knew about it last month because at this very meeting, Felix's son came up and completely out of the blue, and our architect sucks. Don't know if you remember that, but that's what he said. He didn't get that. He didn't... High school students are not sitting there thinking about architects. He got that from somebody. Let's see, who does he live with? Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Doffenbach. I'm a resident of White Marsh Township. And I have an 11th grader and an 8th grader here in the district. So we've been in this district for many, many years and have been absolutely thrilled with the education our kids have received. I've never attended a board meeting until January. And at the urging of my wife, who's involved with the PTO and some other friends, I watched the December meeting on TV and then attended this meeting. And there's a common theme that I've seen in these three meetings, and it seems to be a lot of backdoor deals that are occurring. And that's not really what I would expect in this, in this school district. And quite frankly, it's a bit appalling, and I really think that it needs to stop. And it's quite interesting, the gentleman that just spoke before me, that was one thing that stuck out with me as well was when Felix's son got up at the last meeting and said, oh, and by the way, the architect, or the architecture sucks at the building. So that set the stage, and that's obvious that something was going on in the background. But again, it's all background, and it doesn't seem to be anything that is going on in committee meetings. I've read the committee notes or the minutes from the prior meetings. It doesn't seem to be anything like this. So what I would just ask, well, first of all, I would thank you because I think a lot of parents in this district have been very, very complacent. Myself, I've never attended a meeting until last one, and again, I didn't really feel the need to. But I think there's a lot of complacency in the district because we are such a great district. So I want to thank you for getting us a little bit more involved now and paying a lot better attention. I'm serious. I'm very, very serious because there's a lot of people that are paying attention now, and I think you're going to see all of the meetings packed. So thank you for that and waking us up a little bit. And then second, I would just echo the comments of the other parents. Please try to figure a way to collaborate because it's clearly not happening. And once we see it as parents and our kids notice it, it's a bit embarrassing, and you're either taking us for being ignorant or complacent and that we don't really care. But we do care. So thank you for your time and listening.
Beth Touchlin, White Marsh Township, former school board member. I have sat at these meetings, these last two meetings, very frustrated, but trying to give respect to the new board members because I voluntarily chose to not run again, which is now killing me, watching what's going on. But, and I know you're not going to answer any questions, although I know a few board members would be more than happy to answer your questions whenever you want them asked. That being said, I just want, for the record and for anybody who's watching and for the future, to give some information. And that is, is that every year, the school board has a retreat. And for the last, and we spend, all the administrators are there, we have principals come in, it's money spent, it's a whole day session. Sometimes it's two days. And we go over all the finances of the district, and we go over all the future planning and what are the buildings going to need. And for the last two years, you know, this didn't just pop out of a hat that we knew kids were coming into the district. We did a study. We had a public session. We've done all that work. Last year, Leslie, who's been on the board now for six years, Felix, who's been on the board for two years, Kathy, who's not here, has been on the board, Sue, Mel, myself, Bernie, who left, all the board members, we went into great detail about what was coming our way, the expense that was going to cost, and we all, nine of us agreed to have the architects go forward and start looking at this. These plans just didn't get developed last month. And the fact that now, all of a sudden, you want to do an RFP? Don't tell me, Leslie, that you just woke up Friday morning and decided, you know what? We should go for an RFP. It's not true. I don't care what you say. It's not true. Felix's son, like he said, stood up and said, the architect sucks. Oh, yeah, that's what every 17-year-old is thinking about. This is disgusting, and there's a reason you're doing it. And I don't know what it is yet, but everybody here, ask your friends to start following it because this isn't the end. And every time there's a change, if someone were fired this morning, it would have been a yellow sheet today in the board notes, and you know it. And the fact that there was an amendment to the agenda that nobody else knew about is just because you didn't want the public to know that you were going to be doing this tonight because of what happened last month. And everybody here knows that, too. Nobody's stupid. So I'm asking everybody to watch what's happening because I'm certain this isn't the last thing that's coming our way. I don't know what architect donated what money or what union, you know, you're looking to give the business to, but this isn't the end. And everybody, thank you for coming, and don't stop.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight.